All right, good evening and welcome to the May 7th meeting of the Hickory City Council. At this time, let's see, I'm looking around, I don't see Reverend Roberts. So at this time, I'll call on our city councilman, Reverend Dr. Anthony Freeman, for our invocation. I would ask that if you're able to please stand for our invocation and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Roberts, Freeman, I'm sorry.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we say thank you for your amazing grace, your compassion, your love, and your kindness. What a privilege it is every day that you bless us with. It is a gift, and every gift comes from above and from the Father of lights. Now, Father, we pray that you will continue on being with us as your city officials, and you be with all of the citizens of the city of Hickory, but ultimately, oh God, that all that we say, think, and do, that it will be pleasing in thy sight. Now, Father, we ask that you would direct this meeting. We ask this now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Okay, we have several special presentations this evening, and I am going to start out with the presentation, the proclamation for National Police Week 2024. So at this time, I would like to ask all of our police personnel, both those that are sworn and those that may be civilian, to join me up front here at the podium. I know, that's what Simon thinks. Let's see, who's the newest one of this bunch? Newest one? Okay. You're it. All right, we'll get started here. I don't think I have to tell anybody that's present in this room how much we appreciate all of our coworkers, not just our police employees. We appreciate all of our many coworkers that we have throughout the city, but this is a special week in that it is National Police Week. So we certainly want to take this opportunity to recognize all of our law enforcement officers, as we've all been reminded of this week, what a dangerous profession our law enforcement community faces, and we certainly want to do everything we can to support our men and women. And I hope that we continue with the safety record that we have here in the city of Hickory, and we certainly do appreciate the job that they do each and every day. So at this time, I'd like to read this proclamation. It says, "National Police Week 2024: To Recognize National Police Week 2024 and to Honor the Service and Sacrifice of Those Law Enforcement Officers Killed in the Line of Duty While Protecting Our Communities and Safeguarding Our Democracy." Whereas there are approximately 700,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Hickory Police Department. And whereas there were 43,649 assaults against law enforcement officers in 2021, resulting in 15,369 injuries. And whereas a total of 2,670 law enforcement officers died in the line of duty during the past 10 years, and an average of 267 officers per year. There were 136 law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty in 2023. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 26,572 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including Gerald Wayne Maynor of the Hickory Police Department on August the 9th, 1977. And whereas the names of these dedicated public services servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 12th, 2024 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff. Now therefore, I Hank Guest, Mayor of the City of Hickory, on behalf of the Hickory City Council, do hereby proclaim May 12th through the 18th, 2024, as Police Week in the City of Hickory, and publicly call upon all citizens to honor these peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of their duty. Proclaim this 7th day of May, 2024. Chief?
I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention that it is a sad day for about the first time during National Police Week or the approach of National Police Week, we are wearing warning banners on our badges. Remember those who have fallen before us, and next Wednesday, we will celebrate those in service, and we will remember those and their families that have fallen. But in this community, we are still extremely fortunate to have members of the community continue to step up and continue to come to our profession. We're the best of the best. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm going to ask our officers to stay up here, and I'm going to ask our fire department personnel to join them, and also our code enforcement personnel to join up here as well. In addition to it being Police Week, May is also Building Safety Month, and each of these departments contribute greatly to the building safety within our city limits. So I'm also going to read this proclamation proclaiming Building Safety Month for May 2024. It says, "Whereas the City of Hickory is committed to recognizing our growth and strength, recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence and the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion and diligent guardians, building safety, fire prevention, officers, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. Whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities, largely unknown guardians of public safety are local code officials, who assure us safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. Whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential services provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I Hank Guest, Mayor of the City of Hickory, on behalf of the Hickory City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2024, as Building Safety Month in the City of Hickory, and accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join with their communities in participation in Building Safety Month activities. Proclaim this 7th day of May, 2024." And give this to our code enforcement and to our fire departments and the police department. We appreciate them.
I just want to thank the community and the police department, as well as my staff that are here for all their hard work, and thank the city for their support. Sometimes it's difficult to force in codes and keep people safe, because sometimes codes don't make people happy. But with their support and understanding, we can just take the public and help everyone safe. And just thank everyone in this room also for their support in what we do, because what we do is to help keep everybody safe.
Thank you. All right. Listen, we've had a week, we've had a month, and now we're going to have a day. Alexis Brown. We have, we have a lot of athletes in our community, but I'm pretty certain that we don't have any athletes that I'm aware of that can outrun Ms. Alexis Brown. I think that she has very well indicated here, and it is indicated by this proclamation, that she's probably the fastest lady in Hickory, probably maybe the fastest lady in Catawba County. So we want to recognize her on her accomplishments and her achievements, most recently in conjunction with Lenora Rhine University. And I want to say also, Lenora Rhine University is tremendous partners, and we've got great relationships with all of the staff at Lenora Rhine University. And we appreciate not only their students and their athletes, but all of the staff at Lenora Rhine University for all that we do together with them. All right? Okay. It says, "Proclamation: Recognition of Lenora Rhine Track and Field Athlete Alexis Brown. Whereas on March the 9th, 2024, in Pittsburgh, Kansas, Lenora Rhine Track and Field Athlete Alexis Brown captured her second and third national championship titles at the NCAA Division II Indoor National Championships. And whereas Alexis Brown recorded first-place finishes in the 60-meter dash with a time of 7.18 seconds, and in the 200-meter dash with a time of 23.32 seconds." That's getting it right down to the nitty-gritty right there. And whereas with those performances, Ms. Brown was named the South Atlantic Conference Women's Indoor Athlete of the Year for the second straight year. And whereas Ms. Brown was also recognized as the 2024 Women's Southeast Region Track Athlete of the Year. Whereas on April the 13th, 2024, in Hickory, North Carolina, Ms. Brown also set the NCAA Division II All-Time Record in the 100-meter dash with a time of 11.09 seconds. Now therefore, I Hank Guest, Mayor of the City of Hickory, on behalf of the Hickory City Council, do hereby recognize Lenora Rhine Track and Field Athlete Alexis Brown and congratulate her on her prestigious championship and commend her for her hard work and dedication to her sport and Lenora Rhine University this 7th day of May, 2024. So let's give her a round of applause. And I'm sorry, I failed to mention her coach and other folks that are with her here. Not to put you on the spot, or coach or anything. Both of you are coaches, you have two coaches. That's why you're on some paths. Can they keep up with you?
No.
No.
As you said, nobody. Well, you're certainly welcome here this evening, and we appreciate all of the Lenora Rhine does, and we recognize this girl, her great achievements in the sport of track and field. Thank you, Mayor. All right, that takes care of the month, the week, and the day. Okay, next on the agenda is persons requesting to be heard. It looks like we have one person who's signed up to speak this evening. I'll just add that if you didn't have an opportunity or perhaps you didn't know that you could address the council this evening, that that opportunity is available. We make that opportunity available at the beginning of every council meeting. All we ask is that you approach the podium, that you state your name and address, and that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. I will say that typically, we don't answer any questions or respond at this time, but we will take under advisement anything that you say, and we will follow up with you at a later date. So at this time, I'll ask Ms. Daria Jackson to the podium, and for the record, we all know her, but for the record, we'll get her to state her name and address and allow her to address the council this evening.
Hello, my name is Daria Jackson. My address is 133 Seventeenth Street, Southeast, Farm Lee, Hickory, North Carolina. The multicultural festival was phenomenal, if you missed it. It was the best of Hickory. I had a great time. I'm sorry, none of y'all missed it. But however, in the beginning, before people even got there, the bathrooms were horrible. I took pictures. And I just think that when you have an event like that downtown, you should have somebody in there steady checking on the bathrooms, not just waiting until the end of the program to clean them, because, yeah, because I got pictures. And it wasn't that many people there before then. And then it had a horrible odor that, whoa. But yeah, that was in the beginning. That was around 4 o'clock, around 4:30-ish, and it really didn't get started until like 6:00. So that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask if there's anyone else present that would like to address the council this evening. All right? And just by the way, you don't have to wait until this meeting to address the council. We all make ourselves available by several different means, and if you want to speak to us individually, you're certain welcome to do that at any time. All right? Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of April the 16th, 2024. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
So moved?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, that carries unanimously. I'll also ask for a motion for the approval of the minutes of our special meeting of April the 18th, 2024.
We have approval for that.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That also carries unanimously. Item number seven on our agenda is the reaffirmation and ratification on second readings, and once again, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval of the ratification of the second readings.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously as well. All right, item number eight is our consent agenda. I'll ask if there's anyone on council or staff that would like to have any items removed from the consent agenda this evening.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? The consent agenda passes unanimously. All right, we have several public hearings this evening. I'm going to explain some rules pertaining to the public hearings, and of course, these rules pertain to each of the public hearings. I probably won't go over the rules each and every time. We will have opportunities for you to speak if you so desire. We'll allow those that may be in opposition the opportunity to speak first for up to 15 minutes, and then we'll allow any that may be in favor that same opportunity. If needed, we will allow up to five minutes for rebuttal and surrebuttal at the end of that. I would ask that you understand that it's collectively, it's not 15 minutes each, it's collectively as a group. So if you would please be mindful, if someone has already said what you were anticipating to say, then if you'd be mindful of that 15-minute timeframe, it would be useful to you at that time. So at this time, I'll call upon our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood, to introduce our first public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Guest, members of the city council, Mr. Swanson. First public hearing tonight is consideration of the voluntary contiguous annexation of 31.388 acres located at 2063 Star Town Road owned by Bowman Rentals LLC. It will be presented by Planning Director
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Wood, Mr. Swanson. Again, as Mr. Wood indicated, this is Bowman Rentals LLC for an annexation, just under 32 acres in total. The current development is vacant, and the developer is proposing potential single and multifamily planned development. And of course, annexation is being sought to gain access to public utilities, in this case sanitary sewer. You can see in the red diagonal lines, this is the property in question. You can see Highway 70, southeast, Catawba Valley Boulevard, Star Town Road. So this is the area in question. Anything in the light blue is the city limits. Anything in the yellowish-tan color is in the Hickory ETJ, and everything else is in county. So again, for the zoning, you can clearly see where we're looking at here. It's currently zoned county R-20, and you can see the city C-3, regional commercial, R-2, various other city and county zoning designations. Again, this is an aerial ortho of the property. Just for some perspective, again, Catawba Valley Boulevard, Highway 70, Star Town Road, CBCC Campus, Preston Ridge, they're completing the second phase of their apartments, and then Trivium Corporate Park further to the So the voluntary annexation petition, we believe complies with all applicable statutes. There are adequate public services to serve the site, and we believe that the annexation of the property will not cause available public services to fall below any acceptable levels. And based on these findings, staff respectfully recommends approval of the requested annexation. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Frazier? Thank you, sir. All right, in addition to the rules that I explained before Mr. Frazier got up, we would also ask that you be respectful of those who may be speaking differently than how you feel about a particular matter. We ask that everybody maintains a level of respect regardless of whether or not you agree with what the person is saying or not. So hopefully, we won't have any issues related to that this evening. At this time, I will declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak in opposition of the proposed annexation that you've just heard described by Mr. Frazier. There being no one desiring to speak in opposition, I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in favor. There being no one desiring to speak in favor, I'll declare this public hearing closed and ask if there's a motion or any further discussion from council.
I move approval of the annexation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That carries unanimously. All right, for our second public hearing, once again, I'll turn it over to our city manager for the introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Guest. Second public hearing is consideration of rezoning petition 24-05 for property owned by Bowman Rentals LLC located at 2063 Star Town Road, and again, be presented by Planning Director Brian Frazier.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. So again, the property is currently zoned Catawba County R-20, and the request once again is an indication that the owners desire to develop the property for residential purposes, and they're looking to rezone the property to PD, planned development. Again, here, this is the future land use map. We can see this basically cuts in to a few different sections in terms of our public institutional with CBCC, our core area here, and then our high-density residential. So basically, there's an overlap in the future land use map. With the current zoning, anything in green is county R-20, the blue is O-N-I, commercial 3, and red is the city, R-2 is the city, the planned development here is in the city, and then the R-4, and then down the IND, commercial, I mean conditional zoning. So the property here would go from county R-20 to City of Hickory PD, planned development. And then here again, the orientation north, you can just see the property in question. Again, the CBCC Campus, Trivium Corporate Park, somewhat of an old aerial photo in the Preston Ridge Mixed Use Project. Here is a preliminary drawing of the site that shows both multifamily as well as single-family properties on the site. This again will, if the rezoning's approved tonight, it will still have to go back through the plan review process that the city, county, and NC DOT are involved in. So the rezoning petition 2405, it's classified by Hickory By Choice as High Density Residential, Neighborhood Mixed Use, and Regional Commercial. Basically, the plan calls for a mix of residential, retail, and office space uses, and then the key elements for these districts include neighbor-scale commercial developments. You can read the rest, civic institutional functions, residential, schools, et cetera. The vicinity in which the property is located, as outlined on the previous map that I showed you, possesses most of these elements, and the proposed zoning in the PD would include single and multifamily residential units, which are components of the neighborhood mixed-use area plan. And again, the stated goal of the comprehensive plan Hickory By Choice 2030 is to support a network of mixed-use centers, and mixed-use centers are intended to be neighborhood-scaled, convenient access to goods and services. And the proposed development is within a short distance of larger shopping areas along Catawba Valley Boulevard southeast and US Highway 70 southeast. So the recommended action, staff recommends the following: recommend the petition that is consistent with Hickory By Choice. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing a couple weeks back to consider the position during the petition. During the public hearing, two people spoke in favor, while no one spoke in opposition of the proposed rezoning. Upon the closing of the public hearing, the Planning Commission acknowledged the petition's consistency with HBC 2030, and based upon such findings, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this petition. Staff concurs with the recommendation of the Hickory Regional Planning Commission, and I'll be happy to address any questions that you may have this evening.
Any questions from council?
I have one. Has there been any suggestion of a commercial element on this property?
Yes, sir, if I can. There's been some discussion, let's see if I can get a better picture. There's been some discussion of maybe acquiring some additional contiguous parcels, possibly. That's not anything definite, and if there was to be something commercial in terms of mixed use, it would probably be in one of those contiguous parcels. One of the issues now where it's tough to get commercial in the areas, most commercial businesses, especially the larger ones, some of the big boxes or even a smaller grocery store are looking for rooftops. And we're going to be getting a lot of rooftops, but it's still a little bit too early. So if they did, if the developer, the property owner, did come back for a further, more diversified mixed use with commercial, we would have to evaluate it, and probably would have to go back through the planning process, through the commission, and into this body.
Yeah, that seems like a good location for that type of thing.
It does. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Frazier? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, once again, this is a public hearing. At this time, I will declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone that would like to speak in opposition of this rezoning petition you've just heard described by Mr. Frazier. Okay, there being no one desiring to speak in opposition, I do have one person who has signed up to speak in favor. So at this time, I'll ask Mr. Will Clayton to the podium. And if you would, for the record, state your name and address.
Good evening. Will Clayton?
Will Clayton, twenty-eighty Singer Drive, Hickory, North Carolina. I'm the designer, will be the design engineer on this project, so just always like to come up, and if there's any questions, we can hopefully answer them. We're early on in the process, so we don't have a lot of detail, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to, happy to answer.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'll declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion.
Move approval of the rezoning. Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, that rezoning petition carries unanimously. For our third public hearing, I'll once again ask our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood, for the introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Gess. Third public hearing is consideration of the voluntary non-contiguous annexation of forty-nine point two-one acres located at thirty-nine forty River Road owned by Borno and Creach Properties LLC, to be presented by planning director Brian Frazier.
Thank you, sir. We're looking at just under fifty total acres. Current development is vacant. The future development is potential single-family conservation or cluster subdivision. Annexation is, of course, once again, being sought to gain access to public utilities. This time, city maintains sanitary sewer. You can see the property right here. You can see the approximate closest city boundary. In blue, light blue, is the Hickory city limits, and in the yellowish color is the extraterritorial jurisdiction. So you can see here, River Road, Highway three-twenty-one. This is the zoning. Of course, this here is the proposed area to be annexed, reviewed tonight. This is county R twenty, and this is city R one zoning. And you can see here the area in question, again, River Road, and you can see to the north is the city-owned Henry Fork Wastewater Treatment Plant. And here again is, here is the proposal. You can see the plant itself, as I just outlined before, and this would be the development. It's proposed to be ninety-nine, single-family conservation cluster development. Stormwater control measures are in blue, and the rest, the area in green, which includes some topo and floodplain. This would all be permanent open space. When you have a conservation or cluster subdivision, you have a higher density in the lots, where the lots are smaller and closer together, but going to the R two, you have to maintain a minimum of thirty percent open space in perpetuity, and this plan to consider would go beyond that. So in terms of staff findings and recommendations, the voluntary annexation petition, we believe complies with the applicable statutes. Adequate public services are available in sufficient quantities, we feel, and the annexation of the property would not cause available public services to fall below acceptable levels. Based on these findings, staff recommends approval of the requested annexation.
Any questions for Mr. Frazier? Thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, once again, this is a public hearing. I'll just remind you, there are some folks that have signed up on both sides to speak in opposition and in favor. I'll just remind you that the total time is fifteen minutes for each side, whether it's opposition or in favor. So at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask first for those that will be speaking in opposition, and I'm going to go in order of the folks that signed up. So first up would be Mr. Patrick Daly.
My name is Patrick Daly. I live at thirty-eight sixty-four Serenity Drive, which is in the Melrose Place subdivision. And I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak again regarding the development of this forty-nine acre tract next to the Henry Fork Wastewater Treatment Plant and the Henry Fork River. And I thank you for hearing our concerns last November regarding the impact building all of these homes would have for us as a quality of life issue. I can speak again about traffic congestion and safety, the strain on Catawba County's education system, the meeting the costs of public service and so forth, but in the time allotted, I expect others this evening to make those remarks. For me, as a representative of the River Road residents, however, I limit my remarks to two particular matters of concern, and those are the proximity of this land development project to the Henry Fork industrial site and its proximity to the Henry Fork River. For different reasons, these man-made and natural features are important to the well-being of everyone who lives and works in the Hickory region and beyond. According to the Hickory By Choice thirty plan, quote, "The city of Hickory has aging facilities and infrastructure that is in need of continued maintenance and repair and must continue to plan for growth in the system due to population, industrial increases." The city has identified the need for additional water storage in the distribution system, continued replacement of aging infrastructure, unquote, and other needs. Since that document was completed, the city of Hickory has been making significant progress, particularly with the Henry Fork Plant and the Longview Plant. I can't say enough about how good this is going to be for all of us here. The thirty-five million dollar upgrade to the solid waste handling process at the Henry Fork facility, it's impressive, to say the least. I've seen it. The key word is continue, and I think this development puts limits on the ability for continuation at the plant in the future. I also think a larger concern with this proposed project is the impact it would have on the surrounding tree canopies in the area. Acres and acres of trees would be removed. There's also the resulting impact that it would have on anyone buying a lot and moving so close. I can't imagine the adjustment new homeowners would need to the sights, sounds, and smells that they will experience living so close. We who live in the area have already, we've already experienced the effect from a distance, but have adapted and have worked with Mr. Shaver and plant operators to live together in peace. We know that the plant was built there long before three subdivisions were built along River Road. Before the plant was built in the late nineteen-sixties, there were several houses along what was then called Henry River Road among a massive farm owned by Colin Yoder and his family. Before all that, there were Native American Indians of the Mississippian culture who lived along the River Road area and likely had a settlement on this location. All of Hickory's water treatment and wastewater treatment plants, including the one in Catawba and the future Longview, are surrounded by trees and, in some cases, non-residential activities, such as a ball field and even the river walk. But they're limited use, not twenty-four-seven use like housing, and all are surrounded by low-density zoning, and that's on purpose. This annexation proposal for building up to ninety-nine homes changes things for the city of Hickory. It sets a precedent that would have to be selectively dealt with the next time a builder wants to hook up water and sewage lines to a plant. For this one reason alone, the time to say decline is now. The second precious commodity we have is a water source. We are fortunate to live in an area where Catawba, Jacob's Fork, and the Henry Fork Rivers flow. Again, quoting Hickory By Choice land use section, quote, "Residents appreciate harmony. As the city manages development, it should keep in mind that balance and compatibility are important characteristics. New use as much fit in, respecting the context in which they are set," unquote. Here, the Henry River Conservation District also described in the Hickory By Choice Plan, and the three-year-old Henry Fork and Jacob's Fork Rivers Conservation Plan become important. Both are designated for protection and controlled public access. The Henry and Jacob's Fork Plan offers recommendations to conservation groups, landowners, state agencies, and local governments such as us to ensure high-quality drinking water, reduce water pollution from erosion, and explain how these rivers are a key to economic growth. Catawba County helped to fund it, and the city of Hickory has been among their partners and stakeholders. My point here is that this particular development project should be a concern to all those interested in conservation of our water resources because it affects the future of these rivers for the various needs that we have and we want. It risks pollution down the road should pipes wear out or become damaged by tree roots or soil erosion. Please do not annex, and please retain the low-density designation this land already has. Thank you very much.
If you would, state your name and address.
Sure. If I may ask, before I begin my comments, how much time remains for the.
You should be able to tell.
Yes, there is eight minutes and thirty seconds.
Okay.
And there's another person that's signed up.
Okay, okay. Well, I am Tom Kenny with Foothills Conservancy of North Carolina, and it's actually an honor and privilege.
Your address, please, sir.
My name is Tom Kenny, and I'm with Foothills Conservancy.
Your address.
Oh, oh, two oh four Avery Avenue in Morganton.
Okay, we can hear you fine, I just wanted your address.
I am a citizen of Morganton, but the land trust in which I'm a staff member and a servant for the regional good is Foothills Conservancy of North Carolina. I was just going to say, it's a pleasure to be back in front of the Hickory City Council, and I wanted to share simply information and refresh the council on the progress made that Mr. Daly mentioned, a plan that was prepared and published probably five or six years ago, and that was with the support of Catawba County's general assembly members with Hickory as a stakeholding partner. The Henry and Jacob Fork Rivers and a total of eight hundred acres of North Carolina State Parkland on the Henry Fork and Jacob Fork Rivers, investments to date, green infrastructure, it's an incomplete story of the benefits that the plan seek to deliver to Catawba County residents, all the municipalities, including Hickory, and visitors and tourists that visit the areas. Whether it's new companies looking to invest in the city of Hickory in Catawba County, or new residents, or visitors to outstanding green infrastructure assets like conservation lands publicly owned along important and enjoyable scenic rivers like the Henry and Jacob Fork. There's certainly a history of use and needs that have been provided by the Henry Fork River in particular, but there's been great progress to date. And I just wanted to remind the council of those investments in green infrastructure made five to six years ago, and that this story and this vision of outdoor recreation assets and economic benefits for Hickory and Catawba County is still a work in progress. So basically, I'm here just to share information about that and to encourage that it would be wonderful if there's an opportunity for concerned property owners and neighbors to meet with the current landowner that wants to bring certainly needed housing to the area, to find and explore solutions that respect the investment of gray infrastructure, the wastewater treatment plant that Hickory has made, and also the green assets and infrastructure, which includes three hundred and three acres, the Harris property on the Henry Fork River close by upstream. I thank you for this opportunity to comment, and I'd wish to leave some materials for the clerk to share for those interested.
Yes, sir. Ms. Maria Araya. Is it Araya or Araya?
Araya.
Araya, I had it right the first time. State your name and address for the record, please.
Maria Araya, thirty-six ninety-four Serenity Drive, Hickory, North Carolina, two-eight-six-oh-two. The only comment I have is Hickory's city motto is "Life well crafted. It would not be benefit to the neighbors and the city as a whole. It is too close to the wastewater treatment facility. It would be taking away the quality of life and not adding any value at all to the community and the surrounding area." Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, how much time's left on there, fifteen minutes?
Four minutes and thirty seconds.
Okay, so there's time left, so I'll ask if there's anyone that didn't have an opportunity to sign up that would like to speak in opposition, would like to take any or some of the remaining No one? Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask those speaking in favor, we have two folks that have signed up in no particular order, Mr. Jared Carpenter.
Jared Carpenter, and I work with Century Communities, and I'm the builder on the River Road project. My address is seventy-four oh one Carmel Executive Park Drive, Charlotte, North Carolina. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come speak with you tonight about the River Road project. So why we chose the River Road location, you know, it's a great site, it's in the natural path of growth on the south side of town, it has great access to all over via three-twenty-one and Highway forty. You know, the residential land use is consistent with the area, and it's also consistent with the Hickory By Choice twenty-thirty plan. Site conditions are also very favorable for a residential development, and we're excited about this opportunity. You can see here, we're proposing ninety-nine fifty-foot lots. We're intending on clustering them up at the road. This is a departure from what you previously saw late last year, and I'll get into the differences here in a little bit. But this density per acres would be two units per acre. This is consistent with what the county zoning is now, so we're not asking really for any additional homes on the property, what we, versus what we could do in the county right now today. Under this plan, we would be keeping more than fifty percent of the property as open space. I know that we have to get over thirty percent, but we came last year, we heard the feedback from the city council, we heard the feedback from the neighbors, and we have committed to keeping over fifty percent. we heard the feedback from the neighbors, and we have committed to keeping over 50% of the property as open space and tree safe. In addition, you know, this community's going to be really nice being built in the city. We're going to have sidewalks. We're going to have curb and gutter. We're going to have, excuse me, sorry, we're going to have stormwater control measures, and we're going to have an amenity area with a playground and a field for the children in the neighborhood to play. So, when we came to city council last year, we heard concerns from the council members, from the residents, and they largely laid out into these six categories: density, environmental impact, potential odor, traffic, schools, and public safety. And so, what I want to say is we've reconfirmed with NC DOT that the River Road is under capacity. They do not have traffic concerns. We have subsequently reached back out to the Catawba County School Board and have verified that the schools are under capacity, and they too have no concerns about handling this property. And then, in addition, as you'll see here, this is the site plan we showed last year. We had an entrance coming out onto the access road for the wastewater treatment site there, sort of on the northwest portion of the property. And this was to get around not being able to get two entrances off of River Road, and we sort of loosely had come to terms with the city that that would be acceptable. But subsequently, with the reduction to 99 lots, we can just have that one entrance off of River Road. We can eliminate that entrance off the access road there. And so, fire and life safety, didn't have concerns with it originally after our TRC meeting and sitting down with them, and we believe that this plan makes the community only more safe. And so, we were happy to make that concession. Once we drop below 99, we didn't need it anyways, and so it should help, you know, if there is a situation in the community. With regards to the other concerns, density, as I mentioned a minute ago, you know, we came to council last year with substantially more lots on our site plan. We previously showed 179 home sites. We have reduced that by 79 to get under the 100-lot threshold, which is essentially the byright density for the county zoning. In addition to this, you know, environmental impact and potential odor were also concerns. We believe that leaving more than 50% of the property as open space and tree buffer is going to help mitigate some of the potential odor, and it's also going to leave a natural habitat for any wildlife living out there right now. We did perform, you know, cultural restore studies as well as wildlife studies. We found no protected or endangered species on the site, and we found no cultural resources either. Furthermore, our development is not going to impact any wetlands or tributaries. And some of the concerns about the Henry Fork and how, you know, precious and valuable to the community is, we agree. We've always agreed, but we feel, you know, that we're leaving a very substantial natural buffer here between any of our homes and the river. And then in addition to that, we're going to install stormwater control measures to help mitigate any sort of other impact from runoff on our site. With regards to the wastewater treatment plant, you know, as we sell through the community, we will be disclosing the wastewater treatment plant to any of our buyers. It's part of our natural process. We'll give them a list of disclosures about anything in the area that might be a concern. So they'll be going into the community in the buying process with their eyes wide open as other residents in the area have done over the years. And, you know, we believe they're going to enjoy it. It's a nice, quiet part of town, and I believe that's why a lot of the local residents continue to live there today. You know, Century Communities is very excited about this project. We believe that the River Road site is a thoughtfully designed community that's going to preserve more than 50% of the open space for the neighbors, for the residents, and for the city. And we're going to preserve it at no cost to anybody but ourselves, and we think it's the right thing to do. And I'll open it up if y'all have any questions for Century Communities and/or Chabaldine Engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Dan Chabaldine, 3145 Tate Boulevard, southeast. Chabaldine Engineering. We're the design engineers of the project.
Sir, your residential address, please.
2905 Ninth Street Place Northeast, Hickory, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Mr. Carpenter hit pretty much the main points. We've talked about this project before, of course. The one thing I want, I guess I'd like to just take a moment and let this sink in. Mr. Daly did mention the significance of Henry Fork, the significance of environmental, potential environmental impacts to Henry Fork and to the river. What we're proposing is to keep undisturbed 24 acres of woodland, which would be a buffer for the Henry Fork. I don't know any other development that's going to just preserve 24 acres, particularly of buildable land. So that essentially would be a preserve for the Henry Fork. The development that we're looking at, of course, you can tell is concentrated by River Road. It's on a bluff. It sits 50 feet or so above the Henry Fork. It's as far from Henry Fork as you could possibly get with any type of impervious areas or any other developments. Of course, we're going to have stormwater control measure that's going to treat and detain any stormwater coming off the site. One of the comments that we had previously was traffic noise and the trucks running up and down the access road. So as you can see from the layout, we've eliminated all the lots that back up to that access road to wastewater treatment. So now there's a, oh, I think it's probably at least 100-foot buffer, maybe even more, particularly in some areas between the back lot line and the access road to the wastewater treatment plant. And as I mentioned before, our proposal is also to deed that access road to the city. It is a perpetual easement. If the city doesn't own that road, they've got a perpetual easement as long as they maintain it in good shape, in good condition, then continue using it. Part of our proposal is to deed that to the city along with that little triangular piece up in the corner there. That's where we were going to locate. We talked to the utility department to locate the pump station in that corner. So, those are the main objects. The density, when you talk about the development, the county allows two units per acre. We're at about 2.07 units per acre. So it really complies in the same density as the county zoning would allow. So, it's a much smaller footprint, obviously, than what we had before. Total open space is about 27 acres. As Mr. Carpenter said, that's probably about 58% of the property will remain undeveloped. So, those are the main points that I just wanted to bring forward. I appreciate the opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. How much time is left for those in favor?
Three minutes and forty-four seconds.
Okay. Is there anyone remaining that would like to speak in favor? Okay. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing closed and entertain any motion or further discussion.
I'd like to say, well, first of all, let me start with a question. I don't know if this is for Brian Fraser, Mr. Chabaldine, or any of the other developers. Last November, you guys came before the city council, and the city council rejected this project. If my memory serves me correctly, that it was mentioned that you weren't going to build through the city, that you were going to go through the county. I'm trying to figure out, was there a process? Did they go to the county, or did you guys just come back to the city? Or, me being a pastor and a city councilman, my memory can serve me wrong.
Mr. Carpenter, can I just, we missed the rebuttal and serve. Oh, I apologize. I did. Somebody, I wish they'd call me on that soon.
We can continue on.
Okay.
No, we have not gone before the county to look at doing this project within the county limits. After the denial last year, we sat down and had further conversations with the planning department, the town manager, assistant town manager, to try to find a solution. We think it makes sense. We think it's the right thing to do to develop this site and to tie into public utilities. You know, a byright development in the county is going to mean more land disturbance, and the project is very close to public utilities, so we think it just makes sense. So, haven't pursued it through the county, have just been working on massaging our plan to something that's a little more conducive to the council and to the local residents.
If you don't mind standing here, I've got a few questions, actually. So, you mentioned the selection criteria that you used when you selected this property.
Yes, sir.
What weight did you give its proximity to a wastewater treatment plant? And to follow up on that, is the property currently, is it under a contingency contract that if this is not approved, that the sale does not go through?
Let me take those one at a time, I guess. We obviously were aware of the wastewater treatment plant going into the process. I myself have been a part of a project immediately adjacent to a wastewater treatment facility in a different part of North Carolina. It's east of Charlotte, out in Almaral. You know, there are some buyer objections for negative adjacent uses, but it's not one that prohibited us from being successful out in that community. I've also been, you know, a part of projects that back up to, you know, interstates and things like that as well. So, you know, I obviously would love for it not to be there, but it is. And, you know, we're in the business of providing housing for individuals, and we think this is, despite that, a great location. And then with regards to contingency contract, so, you know, it's not really. If it gets denied in the City of Hickory, we do have the ability to go take it to the county. It's just not our preferred option. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, and it's a great lead into my next one. So you're saying by right, you can put 98 homes if you develop it under county zoning, correct?
Hypothetically.
I think that's right.
Yeah.
How much of this, what percentage of this lot is unbuildable because it's in a floodplain or other topographical issues?
I'm going to defer to Dan. I believe it's eight acres.
It's probably eight acres for floodplain and the block that, you know, comes up between the outcome here.
So that takes it to 82.
I'm sorry?
That takes it to 82 homes under county zoning.
Okay.
Okay, that answers my question.
You may be able to utilize some of the floodplain as open space in people's backyards.
Okay.
So there might be a potential to plus that up a little bit.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
I have another question. Since you said that building through or in the city limits is your preferred option, can you explain why?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, you have less issues when you tap into public utilities. Septic systems fail, and it becomes a little bit of a warranty issue. You know, it also helps, you know, for us, you know, we're a national home builder, so we have product that we like to deploy in different municipalities, and it's really more of a smaller lot product. We do have larger, you know, product in our portfolio that we could deploy on, you know, half-acre lots if we needed to, but it's just, it's not our bread and butter. Furthermore, you know, by doing the smaller lot cluster, you would need to be on public utilities, but that allows us to preserve more open space than you would otherwise if you went in the county and did a septic project. Did I answer your question?
I'll take it.
Okay. Have you done any kind of testing to see if the soil perks so that you could actually develop, as Dan, Mr. Chabaldine said, maybe eight acres, maybe it's more, that would not be developable, which would be a reduction even further in what the county would allow?
So we have not done perk tests. We have done our standard geotechnical test, which shows that the soils out here are extremely suitable for development. You know, they're going to be largely consistent with what's in the adjacent Melrose Place community. So, you know, I would expect that a large portion, if not all of the site, would perk based on the information that we have today.
Any other questions or discussion?
Well, I'd like to say thank you to the residents of the River Road area, those who are adjacent to this property, and to Mr. Chabaldine. I've been reached out on both sides, and to be honest, this would basically be within my ward, and I wouldn't mind having new residents. But at the same time, I'm learning, whether it's annexation, rezoning, some are easy, some are a little bit more difficult than others. But I'm hearing the story that it's either traffic congestion, loss of habitation of wildlife, school capacity, and I think we'll probably always will hear those that may oppose property being developed. However, my stance is, because I always present myself, you'll know where I stand. I just, my number one problem is building close proximity to a water waste treatment facility. But I want to say thank you to Mr. Chabaldine and to the citizens for coming out.
And I want to say, we did our retreat out, and part of it was to go out that way, and currently I believe it's operating at a third of the capacity. And it was a breezy day, and it still was not pleasant. So I can't imagine what it would be as Hickory grows to have that plant go up to 100% capacity and have to live close by it.
And, you know, kind of along the same lines, you know, I can't speak for everybody else here, but I personally have a responsibility to consider quality of life for not only existing residents but future residents. And I can't, you know, it's been, well, not insinuated, we've been told, that if it doesn't go through, the city will go through the county. Well, I can only control, we can only control what we control and make the decisions that we feel are right here in front of us. And, you know, I'm with Anthony, you know, I just, you know, it looks like a great project, it's just the wrong spot.
Yeah.
You know, it's just the wrong position, wrong location for it.
I'll just go on record as saying I concur with what's already been said by the council members that have already spoken. I do agree that if this was in any other location, that we probably wouldn't be having the same discussion, but unfortunately, it is where it is, and I feel in the same way as the council members who have already spoken.
I'll make the motion to deny the annexation.
Second.
All right. We have, is there any further discussion? Okay, so we have a motion to deny the consideration of the voluntary non-continuous annexation of the 49.21 acres located on, at 3940 River Road. So we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like, sign?
Aye.
Okay. So, matter fails, six to, five to one. Six to one, I'm sorry. All right. Since that, since that matter failed, item number four, we have no authority or jurisdiction over the rezoning since the annexation failed, so we will skip on to item number five. I'm going to take just a brief recess here to allow these folks the opportunity to leave.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
It was terrible when we visited.
All right, as I've already said, item number four that was on the agenda would have been the public hearing for rezoning of this same property. And since we have no authority or jurisdiction, we will be skipping down to the next one, which is number five. And once again, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood, to introduce the next public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Gist. Next public hearing is consideration of rezoning petition 24-07 for property owned by Jonathan and Mary Benelli, located on Fifth Avenue Northwest, presented by Planning Director Brian Fraser.
Thank you again, Mr. Wood. Property is .35 acres in size. Property is currently vacant and zoned general business, C2. It's just about a block off of Oldenor Road. And a request of the property owner is that the property be rezoned from general business C2 to residential R2 to accommodate one single-family residential use. You can see the triangular shaped parcel right here. And you can see Third Avenue or Oldenor, Oldenor Road. The future land use is showing this is part of the properties in a urban revitalization area. The rest of it is in the medium density residential area, confirmed by Hickory By Choice. Again, the property in question is, borders the C2, it's currently in the C2. It would go to the R2, which is in the darker yellow. We have O and I here. Industrial is in the purple. Again, the C2 is all in the dark pink color. This is the aerial map. See the site here, just for, this is Oldenor Road. We have Century Furniture to the south and west, and to the north, you can see where Kever's store is. So, the plan identifies the site as medium density residential and a revitalization area, almost but not quite equally split. So, the Hickory By Choice plan recommends low-density residential areas be developed for housing at a density of six to eight dwelling units per acre. The medium density is characterized as a transitional area between higher density areas and more rural areas. And the current land use pattern of larger areas consists mainly of those medium-density residential uses. The rezoning of the property, as discussed, maintains this current pattern. The R2 zoning is listed as, in the comprehensive plan, as the identified implementing district for a medium-density residential area. So, the recommended action, staff respectfully recommends that the petition is consistent with the Hickory By Choice plan. Recommends, the Hickory Planning Commission, back on April 24th, they considered it. During the hearing, one person spoke in favor of the rezoning. No one spoke in opposition to the proposed rezoning. And upon closing the public hearing back in April, the Planning Commission acknowledged the petition's consistency with the comprehensive plan. And based upon the findings, the Planning Commission voted unanimously seven to zero to recommend approval of this zoning rezoning petition. Staff concurs with the recommendation of the Planning Commission in full. And I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Fraser?
I just have one, and excuse my poor math skills, but this would be one dwelling on this property. You have an acreage, correct?
One dwelling.
Okay, all right.
Yes, sir.
Just wanna make sure.
That's it.
Okay. Sitting here doing the calculation in my head, sorry.
Any other questions for Mr. Fraser? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in opposition of this rezoning petition you've just heard described by Mr. Fraser. There being no one desiring to speak in opposition, I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in favor. There being no one desiring to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion of discussion.
I move approval of the rezoning petition.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That rezoning passes unanimously. Okay, next, we have our last, I believe this is our final public hearing. So, once again, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood, for the introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Gist. Final public hearing is consideration of rezoning petition 24-08 for property owned by Donald C. Schrontz, located at 2010 Star Town Road, and again, presented by Planning Director Brian Fraser.
Thank you again, Mr. Wood. So, the applicant is seated here, Sean Drum, he was sitting behind me. The property size is just a little bit over half an acre. It's currently zoned low-density residential, R1. The property, the rezoning request is an indication here that the owner desires to use the property for an office use. So, the request is to rezone the property from low-density residential R1 to regional commercial C3. And that regional commercial C3 is pretty much a catch-all for just about all types of commercial development, significantly big box, which a little over half an acre would not be. You can see the property here in question. This is all, the red is all regional commercial. This here is all, is all basically public use for schools. In this case, Catawba Valley Community College. And we've got, this is almost across from the short road future subdivision as well as Preston Ridge Apartments. It's just on the other side of the road. You can see the parcel and the rezoning, that's currently R1. This is the planned development. This is O and I, this is pretty much the college. This is county zoning, in the green, the R20. And this is the current PD. You've got some O and I here as well. So, you do have contiguous commercial three zoning with this R1 tract. Again, this is somewhat of an older aerial with so much happening in our community. But you can see the parcel in question. This is the Preston Ridge development, Phase Two is almost done. And then there will be the short road development, Bowman Rentals. Again, this is the CVCC campus, Catawba Valley Boulevard. 70 is up here, and again, CVCC and Preston Ridge. So, according to the Hickory By Choice plan, again, the area converges on three future land use categories, public institutional, neighborhood mixed use, and regional commercial, much like Bowman Rentals that you heard me talk about earlier. So, the C3 zoning district implements the regional commercial policies of the comp plan. And the C3 district is intended to provide a full range of retail and business services. C3 district permits a wide variety of uses, including professional offices. So, given these factors, the rezoning of the property to C3, we believe respectfully should be considered consistent with the findings and recommendations of the 2030 plan. Now, staff believes that the rezoning petition 24-08 is consistent with Hickory By Choice and recommends the following. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing back on the 24th of last month to consider the petition. During the public hearing, one person spoke in favor of the rezoning, which was, I believe, the applicant, and no one spoke in opposition, and we haven't received any contact or calls since then. So, upon closing the hearing a couple of weeks back, the Planning Commission did acknowledge the petition's consistency with the Hickory By Choice 2030 comp plan. And based on the findings, the Planning Commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval of such petition. And staff, again, respectfully concurs with the recommendation of the Planning Commission. And if you have any questions for me.
Do we know what the intended use is?
All I know, it's gonna be a professional office. The applicant is here tonight, sir.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Fraser?
You answered it, and I just wanna make sure that that is the case because this is gonna be, it's near a school, number one, and it's gonna be across the street from a residential area. And the comment that you made, that it's a catch-all for most commercial businesses, is there any businesses of delicate nature that are excluded from that zoning category? Perveyors of adult-type goods?
No, I'll just, I'll just be direct and say, no.
They could be, it could be.
It could be, it could be depending on how far of a distance
From a school.
you are looking at from a public institution. As the planning director, I would look at that as the zoning, which would be contiguous and not necessarily the nearest business to the community college. So, I would say, yes, it would be quite restricted for such types of unnamed.
Yes, thank you. That answers my question. Thank you very much.
For misquest.
Yeah, took the long way around the lawn, but we got an answer.
Any other questions for Mr. Fraser?
I'm just trying not to get fired.
I understand.
So far, so good. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We cut your public hearings from six to five. All right, at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in opposition of the rezoning petition that you've just heard described by Mr. Fraser. All right, there being no one desiring to speak in opposition, we do have one person who has signed up to speak in favor, Ms. Jennifer Dowell. For the record, if you would state your name and address.
Hey there, I'm Jennifer Dowell. My address is 3262 Signum Derry Road in Newton. My other half and I, Sean Drum, on Carolina Heritage Realty, we currently have the property under contract. Our plan is to put our office there. We're a residential property management company that's been in business for over 30 years. And I understand the Schrontz well service had his office there for the past few. So, it'd be going from one family business to another family business.
Are you at liberty to say what that business might be?
Yep, property management, real estate.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Nothing fun. Absolutely nothing fun.
No dancing girls.
Yeah, no dancing girls. Well, you have to talk to him. None on staff, how about that?
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, there's no rebuttal on this one.
No.
No.
I can't believe y'all let me miss that. Okay, at this time, I'll declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion or any further discussion.
I move approval of rezoning.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppositions, same? All right, that passes unanimously. That is it, believe it or not, for our public hearings this evening. Next on the agenda is approvals to boards or commissions. I'll ask if there, I have one. I would like to make a motion, let's see, which one was it? Brad Lell. I'd like to promote, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mr. Brad Lell to the TDA Board as the Hickory representative.
Second.
Well, I wanna ask if there's any, if there's any other, any other nominations? Is that it for this evening? Okay, now.
Second. Oh, okay.
I made the motion, you second.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, same? All right, that passes unanimously. Any matters not on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, general comments, I have just a couple. We recognized in the beginning of this meeting, some different folks, but we didn't recognize some very important folks also. This is Municipal Clerks Week, and it just so happens that our municipal clerks are the ones that do the proclamations. So, I didn't burden them with a proclamation for Municipal Clerks Week. But I do wanna recognize our longtime clerk, Ms. Debbie Miller, and our newest deputy clerk, Ms. Iris Monday, for their great, the great work that they do.
Iris Childers.
What did I say?
Iris Bundy.
It's been a long meeting, hasn't it?
It's been a long meeting. She knew who I was talking to.
Well, we need to give them a round of applause.
Yes!
Well, just so you know, how good a clerk Debbie is, she said, "Let's just not put the Clerks Week thing on there, 'cause we've got enough stuff." So, she said, "Let's take that episode."
I was gonna, I was gonna.
Although she must have left off the rebuttal and surrebuttal off the notes that she writes.
No, 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 no. In her defense, that's what I got you guys forced to.
I figured she must have left them off, but I guess I was.
To remind me of stuff like that, I can't do everything. Okay, real quick, real quick, I do wanna make mention of our, some folks in our community known as the Hickory Citizens Litter Project. They've scheduled this Saturday for a project called Hickory Cleans Up. That's gonna be eight sites, I believe it is, from Saturday, starting at 8:30 and going till noon. They're going to dispatch folks to eight different sites to pick up litter. And if you haven't already joined that group, I would encourage you to do so. So, we appreciate the Hickory Citizens Litter Group. This is not their first time, and they do a lot to help clean up our community. So, I did wanna make mention of that as well.
Are those called litter critters or something?
No, they're, no.
Litter quitters.
We're called litter quitters. Yeah, quitters, that's the city.
I have an item. I would like to encourage the newspaper, and I know you've got an article coming out about it, but to encourage everyone to attend the Interbasin Transfer Meeting tomorrow night at Ridgeview and let Charlotte recognize that this is something that will not benefit our community or our surrounding communities, and it will only benefit them for their growth.
Is that at 6:30?
5:30. And come early.
At the Ridgeview Lightroom.
At the Ridgeview Community Room.
The annual.
Whole community room, yeah.
Encourage everyone to attend.
Just one. Just one quick thing, I sent a note to Warren this, last week, just telling him what a great job our fleet maintenance crew does on the vehicles for the city of Hickory. I was in another local municipality a couple of weeks ago, and it really hit home because one of their garbage trucks pulled up beside me, and it was in, it was so dirty that you could barely read the logo of the town on it. And I was embarrassed for them, and it really made me realize what a great job they do and what a positive reflection it is on Hickory, the job that they do. So, I just wanna recognize them publicly for the great work that they do.
Our garbage, we got the cleanest garbage trucks of any municipality I've seen.
Vehicles, across the board. I mean, I see multiple every week, and they're all perfect.
Sanitation vehicles, I should say.
Perfect.
It's actually Sean. So, I've got two things. So, after 30-plus years of work with the city of Hickory, Melissa Miller is going to be retiring. And so, we thank Melissa for all her work, all those years. She's one, just one more that started with me in the early 90s, or I started with, that are not with, gonna be with us. But, so thank you for all that you've done. Clever. So, you'll notice that that person sitting to her left is Carrie Dunlap, with Mark, previously with Martin Starnes, who comes and does our audit presentations. So, we are very fortunate to have landed Carrie from Martin Starnes. Of course, having done our audit all those years, I mean, she knows everything. So, she actually started Monday, she came back today, which is a good sign. So, we'd like to welcome Carrie. She lives in Hickory, got, family lives in Hickory, so we're thrilled to have Carrie Dunlap on board.
Welcome, Carrie.
So, the audit will go smoothly. So, the audit will go smoothly this year, without a hitch, right?
Well, it'll be those Martin Starnes people if it does.
Under Melissa's 30 years, it went pretty smoothly as well.
Yes, it did.
She, we got recognized many times for, for the work that her crew does, and it was all for her leadership, and we greatly appreciate her, and we're gonna miss her tremendously here at City Hall.
And as a side note, related to the audit, while, so we'll probably have one more kinda rough year, 'cause we sealed, we're, we're going to transition to the new software and moving forward for the next year's audit should be a lot more smooth.
No pressure, Carrie.